I would like to call the regularly scheduled board meeting for Monday, August 11th, 2025 to order. Please call the roll.
Mr. Ferguson.
Here.
Mrs. Washington.
Here.
Dr. Ballard.
Here.
Mrs. Nazario.
Here.
Mr. Sturgill.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Recognition of visitors?
Just friends and family.
Yep. First hearing of the public, again, still friends and family. I will entertain a motion to approve or amend the minutes of the July 29th special meeting.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Dr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Nazario.
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mrs. Washington.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Old business. Seeing none. Reports and recommendations of the treasurer.
I have an update to the May forecast.
Back in May, I shared that if the state of Ohio's final budget made major changes to our district's funding or financial plan, I would bring you an updated forecast. The budget was finalized on June 30th, and there are several key changes for fiscal year 26. First, our per people supplement will increase by about $155,000. That's $27 more per student. Second, threshold cost reimbursement, previously called catastrophic costs, increased by almost $170,000 this spring. This program repays districts for special education expenses exceeding roughly $30,000, depending on the category, and only for services listed in a student's IEP. Third, the May forecast included over $900,000 in the state House proposed fiscal year 26 and 27 funding. That funding was not included in the final budget, so our projected revenues are lower. Finally, the most significant change is the elimination of the supplemental targeted assistance funding. This funding supported lower wealth districts that educated fewer than 88% of their resident students. It was based on 2019 enrollment and financial data, and its removal means a loss of over $3.5 million for our district. Also, as we closed fiscal year 25, revenues in lines 1.06 through 2.06 were lower than expected, mainly due to line 2.06. This reflects the final S R transfer to the general fund for salaries and benefits of staff employed during the 2020 through 2021 school year when the district used remote learning during the COVID-19 pandemic. As we close fiscal year 25, there were some updates to expenditures. First, capital outlay spending came in nearly $1.3 million lower than expected. This is because our most recent school bus purchase occurred at the start of fiscal year 26 instead of at the end of fiscal year 25. Second, during our year-end closing procedures, we identified a more efficient way to process the $7 million transfer to the permanent improvement fund, approved in May of 2024, for capital projects that were completed. After consulting with the ESC and legal counsel, we were advised to leave the expenses in the general fund rather than re-coding each line item to the PI fund. This approach poses no risk, creates no compliance issues, and is considered best practice when completed within the same fiscal year the transfer is projected. This change was approved by the Board of Education on June 25th. Let's take a look at how all of these changes impacted the district's cash balances. The chart compares the district's cash balance projections with and without levy renewals. With renewals, we finished fiscal year 25 about $3 million higher than the May forecast. Fiscal year 26 is slightly lower than May's numbers, and by fiscal year 27, the balance is $7.6 million less than projected in May. Deficits begin in fiscal year 28 with a $10.5 million shortfall compared to a small surplus back in May. By fiscal year 29, the deficit reaches $28 million, more than double the May projection. Without renewals, we again finished fiscal year 25 about $3.2 million higher than May. In fiscal year 25, the balance is slightly lower than May's forecast. By fiscal year 27, it drops to $1.3 million compared to the $8.9 million back in May. Deficits begin in fiscal year 28 at $19.5 million versus $18.4 million in May. By fiscal year 29, the deficit reaches $43 million, about $14 million worse than May's projection. As you can see, even with renewals, state funding losses accelerate the decline in the district's cash balance. Without renewals, the district moves into deeper deficits much faster, making it harder to maintain financial stability. Next, let's review the status of the district's levies. There are two renewal levies on the November ballot. The operating expense levy, which generates about $11 million per year, and the emergency levy, which generates about $3 million per year. Both renewals come at no additional cost to taxpayers. The $41 million bond, first issued back in 2001, will expire at the end of this calendar year, resulting in a tax decrease for our community. And the 2001 classroom facilities levy, also known as the 034 maintenance fund, expired at the end of calendar year 2024, also reducing taxes for residents. Looking ahead, the next forecast is due to the state by October 15th. After that, forecasts will be due in February and August instead of November and May. These forecasts will include the current budget and three-year projections rather than the five-year forecast we've done in the past. These changes were part of the new state budget. We should also be aware that the state budget could change further if there are vetoes or new laws passed. As we prepare for the next forecast, we will continue to review the quality and effectiveness of our programs and services, making budget adjustments as needed. We will also keep evaluating our levy status and determine when to ask voters for continuing or additional funds to support the district. Any changes in these areas may significantly impact future projections. With the forecast being a projection based on today's information, the further out we project, the more likely it is to change. With these factors in mind, our numbers will continue to fluctuate, and the future updates may look different. Through this planning process, we remain committed to transparency, collaboration, and responsible fiscal management. We will keep the community informed, involve stakeholders in decisions, and develop a plan that supports the long-term success of our students, staff, and community. Our top priority remains providing a high-quality education for students and supporting the staff who serve them. This concludes the update to the May forecast presentation.
Questions? Discussion?
I have items 8.01 through 8.08 for approval.
Entertain a motion? Discussion. I want to mention, once again, we value all of our donors, but I see $1,000 from the Ohio State Eagles, $6,000 from American Legion Post 30, and $10,000 from the Nordson Corporation in cash for various projects going on in the district and how much we value the community assistance for those kinds of things. With that, roll call, please.
Mrs. Washington.
Yes.
Dr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mrs. Nazario.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Dr. Graham.
Thank you, sir. And first, I'd like to thank Tia and her office for putting that update together. I know there have been a lot of curveballs thrown our way from the state from the time we passed the May forecast. Obviously, the budget took place in June, and then we tried to figure out what that meant in terms of some of the changes, especially with the vetoes. So we're still putting things together, but again, I just want to thank Tia for keeping us current so we can get a good idea of where exactly we are so we can address our needs appropriately. Okay, in terms of updates, we're going to start doing a little bit more sharing from the community from different departments throughout the, during board meetings in the future, starting now. And this one, we chose to focus on the areas that candidly are our biggest challenge, at least where last year, and share what the updates are and what our plan currently is. If I could just set it up, Stephen, real quick. This is Dr. Stephen Sturgill, he's going to kind of lead this part, but he's going to talk to us about behavior. And last year, we had some, especially at elementary levels, we had some behavior issues that were more extreme than typical years. And what we did in response, in preparation, I should say, for what we expected to happen, not just COVID, but children nowadays are more raised by technology than interacting with other children. So children are different than they were, so we have to make sure that we're providing the supports necessary to meet those unique needs. We met with a group of teachers and sports staff throughout the course of the year to evaluate and monitor how our plan was going, and candidly, it wasn't going well. At the high school, behavior is better than it's been, at least in my tenures here, the issues have really calmed down. But in elementary levels, there were some disruptions that we needed to coach our children better on in terms of managing their behaviors. So when we did that, we overwhelmed, when I say we overwhelmed people with supports, and I think, and I won't speak for everybody, but I think the consensus was that, yeah, the people were there, the expertise was there, but the system was not. So we had the, we had all the supports on standby, but we were misusing all of them. So we got together to try to streamline things and help educate people on how better to be, to better take advantage of those services in a much more efficient way. So Stephen, if you don't mind, can you walk us through where we've been and where we landed?
Yes. And just to echo Dr. Graham's, the effort started around March, April with, we had various teachers, administrators. We met for several months, a week at a time, to develop actually this process and systems to put in place for this school year. So it was an effort from everybody involved, which is really nice. So I want to show you, and I'll go ahead and make it bigger so you guys can see this, but I want to show you the flow chart that we're going to work from. It does match a lot of our work that we do in the district. Sometimes, right now, they call it MTSS, that's also called RTI process in the schools. So I'm going to start with the tier one and I'm going to bring.
And could you, Stephen, for the folks who are watching this on TV in their homes, explain the difference between tier one, tier two, and tier three?
So tier one is their, it's strategies and interventions we do for every student in the classroom or even in the district. Tier two is for few students who might need a little bit more support. And tier three is for students who need a lot more support, more, maybe more intense counseling, things of that nature.
Thanks, yeah.
So at the beginning level, which is tier one, we started really with presenting, you know, behavior. A student has some type of behavior. There's a decision that has to be made. Is this something that the teacher deals with or does it go to the principal? The great thing about this document, it is interactive, and so anybody could go in here and click on it. Oh, jeez, what is this for? And it goes to our student behavior management process, which. it goes and it talks about what is the teacher-managed behavior and what is the office-managed behavior, and what is the actions that go along with it. So, within this document, whoa. So, if there is a presenting behavior, there's a couple of things the teacher could do. One, they could handle it themselves, or they can go and work with the school administration on that behavior. And the other route they can go is they could get the family involved and really with a face-to-face meeting or a phone call to talk and discuss about their behavior. But the biggest thing is, we want everybody to get together to really problem-solve with the referring teacher, the school counselor, and the school admin, and how they can help problem-solve and really get to the roots of the behavior and get the student really in class settled. We call it deregulated in many ways, which is what we're trying to do so they can learn at a very high rate. So, it is in a circular pattern because we think as it adds, it's constantly ongoing at the Tier 1 process. Now, if a student does have some severe unsafe behavior, we don't wait to do anything. We actually, right away, start to develop a safety plan. And it's been part of our process that we always had in the school. We want to make sure that we identify that, listen, if a student, right away, has some signs of unsafe behavior, we're going to go ahead and develop that safety plan with the parent involved, with the school administrator and referring teacher.
And that's not just unsafe, like, classroom behavior, it could be unsafe to themselves, it could be unsafe to others, too. I think those are important pieces to add on because oftentimes, our students do cause harm to themselves, too. And I know that wasn't a huge part of the conversation, but that is a huge part of the work, too, making sure that those safety plans are developed with families to get that engagement so that we can, yes, put some of those practices that are working at school, at home, and vice versa. So, that communication with families is huge. Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, Mike said he wasn't going to say anything.
I tried. I did. I promise. I did. That's an important part when we, you know, when we talk about a lot of the behaviors manifest with self first, and then they're demonstrated outwardly. So, yeah, basically, that was an important part.
Right. And what I'm going to show you below, when we go through this process, is where Dr. Graham talked about, we had a lot of supports in the district, but it wasn't aligned with the tiers or even how to get that support. So, we're going to go through this document, and below, I'm going to show you how that support actually comes into play, the support Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3, and how people access the support. So, I just want to show you guys the information. So, on Tier 2, and this is where a student is showing some really maybe aggressive behavior, different types of behavior, and we need more support, more intervention.
Or they're just not responding to Tier 1's.
Or they're not.
Something a little more intensive.
Thank you. So, we refer to the PBIS Tier 2, which is 18, and we start to create and implement an intervention plan. And we're going to use our system, which is Panorama, which is what we're really excited about as far as creating the plan and monitoring the plan inside Panorama. But also, there's a lot of strategies that we can use essence out of Panorama. We'll talk about that, too. So, with that, we start, we create an intervention plan, and then also, we start to coach, coach through the intervention and then implementation. When I say coach, that's like coaching the teacher, getting that support and that help that's much needed. And we start to really monitor how it's going. I think that's one big thing is you're going to see that, maybe you haven't seen in the past, is more of an aggressive monitoring of how the student is actually doing in a classroom with all these interventions and with the plans. So, just to move to Tier 3. So, if the student, again, is not showing really progress, we go to Tier 3, where the PBIS Tier 2 team reviews the progress. We look to revise the plan as much as possible. And this is where the administrator is able to, right now, do more, coordinate that support as needed. And I'm going to talk about that in a minute. The supports, and again, this is interactive, how they go in there and they could click. So, if they want a wellness coach or a behavior coach, they just go ahead and click. Bring this up. And this is one thing that we heard from our staff, is that we didn't know how to get in contact with a behavior coach or a wellness coach. It's actually on the document now. They actually go in there and click on it, and it'll take them right to the document where they can start to put the information in to receive that support, which is pretty cool.
Is this available on the website?
This, right now, is not available because I'm showing you guys right now, and eventually.
I think there's an important piece there. We are asking the building administrators to be the coordinator of the supports in learning. There's a lot of confusion about, you know, for staff, how to, when are they coming, things of that nature. So, the instructional staff and support staff should primarily be having the conversation with the administrator. The administrator will be working on making sure that they're coordinating the dance of support to make sure that we have the right.
I'm a new teacher. I'm going to know how to access.
So, the new teachers will know how to access the PBIS referral system in which they can make the decisions between office-managed and classroom-managed behaviors. It will still fall in those ongoing conversations with the school leader, will then trigger the school leader to then coordinate those services, the personnel, to help support the classroom teacher. Trying to make it a more direct conversation versus a teacher or a parent pro or whoever's supporting the classroom to have all these multiple, you know, conversations, coordinated those conversations. The administrator will coordinate, and then they'll be brought in. The instructional staff will be brought in to the fold there versus them trying to figure out, well, you know, here's the form I got to figure out for this, here's the form I have to figure out for that. We streamline the process to say, okay, you know, that will go through the administrator.
So, PBIS means what to the public?
This is how we're going to intervene in behaviors and support students.
Okay, what does it stand for?
Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports.
Okay.
Can I interrupt, too? I mean, just follow them. It's the team, Tier 2 team. Can you tell us who makes up the team members?
Yeah. Ross, you want to talk that up?
You know, I think if you just keep scrolling, it, yeah, we'll play that out. So, is Stephen, you know, can you?
There you go.
Yep. So, the Tier 2 team is listed there. So, the building administrator, the counselor, family member, the teacher, and then others as needed. So, we want to make sure we're nimble and responsive to the needs of the student and we build the supports around the student instead of just having a static preset team. But the building administrator, counselor, family member, they always need to be part of that team.
Yeah, the static preset team, we determined, was one of the obstacles of making this process much longer than it needed to be.
Yep. And I think, can you go back up, Stephen, just to the roles of the staff members? So, back in April, we surveyed our staff members, to Dr. Graham's point earlier, about who does what and with what set of expectation. And so, based on their responses and then their job descriptions, then we put together this. Can you, yeah, just scroll down right to, keep going. Yeah, right, yeah, right, right there. Yep, so like school counselors, what their role is as opposed to the special education supervisors or the wellness coaches, the behavior coaches. So, all of the people that have some type of a role, we need to really clearly define exactly what their role is. Are they working more with the students in the counselor's case? Or are they working more with the staff in the behavior coach's case, for example?
Yeah, no, you, you keep going. You were doing good.
You're good.
Just, again, what Ross was talking about, we really identified the support positions and the roles, responsibilities within the flow chart and the system that we were working in. So, as you can see there, for instance, school counselors who are really student-focused will really work in Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3. And you can see right there, and I won't go through every one, but, you know, the behavior coaches, again, it's clickable. You can go right to their site. But where they come in, in Tier 1, Tier 2, Tier 3, the wellness coaches are Tier 2 and Tier 3. And we'll go down to where we get our special ed supervisors involved in Tier 2 and Tier 3, our school psychologists who are involved with all three tiers, and finally, our social workers who are really involved in Tier 3. Again, this is all about behavior. All right, they do a lot more other than in their regular jobs. We're just talking about behavior, so I just want to make sure we understand that. So, really good job of really identifying where they come in in this flow chart, which is very important for us and for our people to know when to act on or when to call for that support. So, to keep going, we really need to do more, a little bit more in-depth. And we call that problem solve, refer, create, and monitor, and that's our process for this behavior plan and flow chart. So, we start with really problem-solving with the referring teacher, school counselor, and school leader. Again, this matches, this right here will match, and I keep going back and forth, but it matches our plan right here, as you can see right here. We make sure everything matches. And then what, you know, we need from them as far as Tier 1 and what that problem solving will look like. Then we get into our refer, and this is where we talk about our PBIS Tier 2 team, and Ross just explained what that team consists of. Then we get into using our Panorama system. Panorama is very interactive. It has a lot of use to it. And so, we use it not only for behavior, but we use it for attendance. We can use it for academics. And again, a lot of SEL strategies live in Panorama. So, we use it for a lot of supports when it comes to in the classroom and with students. So, the first thing is refer. We'll refer a student for a report. It's all meant, it goes to the principal. So, it could be anybody from a teacher who wants to refer a student for behavior or somebody else will refer that student. It goes to the administrator. And this, again, is with this form they fill out. It's all interactive and online. And then, once the school leader receives the refer for support, we will start to determine the next steps. And so, the next steps could be create the intervention plan. So, this intervention plan also lives in Panorama, and it's really interactive. And you just click on create a plan where that student, you can see the information for one of our students. And then, again, you fill out the information in Panorama. And it's just a page and a quarter. And once you create that intervention, you start to monitor. And this is a big part of maybe what we didn't do very well in the past that I'm very excited about because we're going to be able to monitor what we're doing for students. It becomes for, you know, attendance intervention. It could be academic intervention, and it definitely is for our behavior intervention. So, we, so the intervention plans live within Panorama. Information for the student, and you can see, kind of, this would be a six-week intervention plan. It could go 12 weeks, 18 weeks, or even for a full year. And we're able to add notes, and you guys can see right there, weekly or even daily, on how the student is doing. What I love about the system is that it will send reminder emails to the people who are aligned to the student, hey, you need to put in a note for the intervention into the system.
So, a student cannot slip through the cracks.
So, they don't slip through the cracks, yes. And that's what I love about this, is the reminders that you need to put something in. So, we'll monitor that. We'll monitor, again, it goes back to our tiered system. We'll monitor that progress, and then, again, if it needs to be adjusted, we adjust the plan. And it might have to go to further support. So, that's where we get into, I want to say, one of those kind of divisions where we get maybe functional behavior assessment going for a student, and then we start doing the behavior improvement plans, which is a little bit more in-depth intervention for the students. So, that is our flow chart and system that we're going to use for this school year. We're really excited about it. It took us some good group conversation and working with our staff and then coming up with these models.
Questions for the board? Stephen, that's why I say thanks. And again, when I talked earlier on, we, I said, the behavior at the high school, great. Behavior at the middle schools, great. Behavior at the elementary schools, it's just a handful of kids across the district. But candidly, when they had needs, we didn't meet them very well. So, we took a look at everything. We surrounded ourselves with the right people. We dove deeper, learned more, and put systems in place that are just a lot more efficient and effective. So, again, thank everybody who was a part of that. And I want to thank Stephen for doing the presentation. But also, you know, everybody kind of jumped in. And it's not because we don't have confidence in Stephen. That's just how we operate. We're just very collaborative on things that we do. So, we make sure we finish each other's thoughts and egos don't get in the way. But as we do more and more presentations to update the board and community on separate things, just expect to see that. It's just, we, that's how we play.
I do have one question. Have we compared what we do to like-minded districts or districts that are very similar to us in behaviors to see if they have things that are working that we can borrow or if we have things that are working that we can share with them to kind of? Because the kids are the same from California and New York right now. They're all being very kiddish in a lot of ways. So, there's got to be something that they're doing downtown Chicago in some of those schools that are working versus some of those who are not. And I'm just curious, how do we matching up, and if it's matching, if it's man's deal?
So, we match up very well. We did a lot of research on this. Look at that log at the schools. This process and this flow chart matches the MTSS kind of process very well.
Which is statewide.
Here it's just an export, and I'm going to, it's also responsible intervention. But within this, also, there's a lot of best practices. So, our house, you know, house of agencies, any agencies that we have that are available for us. So, yeah, we made sure that we embedded a lot of support in here that you might not see right now, but they will be available. For all of our, all of our students, the staff to use.
And that's where you say that, after hearing, I mean, people was turning down there. I know our money situation is not as well as it should be, but I encourage you to always kind of look to your left and your right and see if there's things that we can glean from other people. And don't be afraid to go and spend the time with those people that could teach us. You'd be my, my lean, my peak.
Yeah, the great thing is we're able to master the fabric, we're able to, you know, agencies. It just costs us nothing. So, that's the great thing about having a lot of our collaboration, a lot of our, you know, house of agencies. I think that if they want to be in our schools and they want them in our schools, and we do a lot of follow-up, we can make sure they're doing all the right stuff for our students.
Thank you.
Also, I would invite Ross, Dr. Graham, and me anyways into the conversation.
Okay, your second presentation, Missy DeAngelis. One of our biggest struggles, and we candidly didn't get much better last year, is attendance. So, as we do everything, we're constantly looking over our shoulders to figure out how we can do better, engaging the right people. But I have Missy provide an update on where we are and what our plans are moving forward.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you. So, as a committee got together to review our behavior practices and what we have in place in our district, we also had a committee of attendance persons gather at the end of the school year, review our processes, make recommendations to codify, make sure everyone is aware of what's expected based on House Bill 410, which is the law governing chronic absenteeism within the state. So, we wanted to not create a whole separate system. We wanted to mirror what we did with the behavior flow chart. So, we created something similar within the attendance flow chart. So, we have Tier 1 attendance practices that we're planning to implement this school year. Not that they're not being done, but we wanted to make sure it was codified throughout all the buildings in our district. And as the behavior flow chart was kind of role-specific, we did the same thing with our attendance practices. So, Tier 1 attendance practices would be something that would happen for everyone in the school. We start with our secretary of staff. They are, they are a front line. Families know them before they know anyone else. And so, we wanted to engage our families with that first line, with our secretaries, making a welcoming return from an absence for a student from the, from the. making a welcoming return from an absence for a student from the, from the secretary, knowing their students and their families. Making sure we have accurate attendance data in Power School. Making sure all of that is clean. Absences are reported correctly if a student isn't absent, but that's also corrected when we find out if there's a reason for an absence that is excused and does not count against a student under House Bill 410. Again, as also using and implementing the correct attendance codes and making that personal phone call with the families whenever at all possible. We do have a law that requires us to inform families within the 90 minutes of the school day. And to accommodate that, we do do robo calls for absences. And we also have their absences on Power School. The parents can see if they're looking on their apps. But that personal phone call is going to be where we find out that individual's story and making the family feel, well, they really care about what's going on with me and my child or what's going on with my family, and that they can provide us a connection to supports that we may need.
And Missy, can you share the data roughly, I'm not going to put you on the spot, of the buildings that did that last year?
Yes.
To find out and demonstrate it does work?
The buildings that really made that personal connection and built that relationship with the families had a much lower chronic absenteeism rate compared to our other buildings. At various levels, too.
Like one building improved by 15% and the other was, was it 12%?
It did.
So it's huge. So again, we know it works, we just have to make sure we follow it.
Relationships work.
Yep.
We're asking our teachers, so when they've contacted families, if they can, about personal absences. For example, if a student is out for an extended period of time, are you reaching out to them to make that personal connection? Not in a negative tone, like why aren't you in school? Let's use asset-based messages. Wow, you are so missed today. Our, our classroom wasn't the same without you. We want to make sure you get the work you have. We'll make sure you have what you need when you return to school. Here's some opportunities for you to connect with us. We are also utilizing as a district this year Class Dojo, which will be used, able to be utilized pre-K through 12. So parents will receive, are able to receive the messages through that app. So sometimes we find out from talking with our families and our parents that they don't have time to take a phone call, but they can respond to a quick message on an app. It's kind of a text message system, but it's within this one system that we can control and monitor and be aware of. We're going to use that for communicating with families at all levels. It's going to be an option. Some buildings also use Google Voice. Mr. Hillco at the high school saw a lot of success using that with his seniors and his parents and built that one-on-one connection with those families using that strategy. As well as the old-fashioned phone call or maybe even the conversation in person. Our school leaders are going to continue with that welcoming students back from absences, making sure attendance, attendance data is accurate in Power School. We're going to ask them to frequently, daily review our chronic absenteeism report that we can find from panorama. As Dr. Sturgill shared, we utilize panorama not as a reporting site, but as a visualization. It takes our data from Power School and helps us able to quickly see trends and where absences are occurring, even down to the actual grade level. Is this grade level improving on their chronic absenteeism in my building versus where they were last year at this time? And then we also reviewed with our building secretaries last week and our administrators last week, the procedures for what happens if a student is chronically absent. And if they meet so many different days of absence and hours of absence, excuse me, what happens at that time? So initially, you know, if a student starts triggering that 19 hours of absence before they get to that starting to emerge as being chronically absent, we've got to make sure we're reaching out and connecting with them. Find out what's going on. Hey, we missed you today. What's, why have you been unable to be here? How can I help support you to make sure you are in school? Then by law, if a student has 38 hours excused or unexcused absences, they're required to receive what the state calls an A letter, an A event letter, which informs the parent formally that their child has triggered that incident within the reporting of the state. Should a child's attendance continue to deteriorate and they reach that 72 hours of unexcused absence, then it's required to note it to the state as a, they call it a B event. Once a student has triggered us having a B event, the school building has approximately two to four weeks to schedule attendance intervention team meeting with the parent. Should, once they have the, that's a level D meeting, excuse me. Once the plan is in place, we hope that, and we've seen some buildings where the student's attendance has improved based on what's been put in the plan. Sometimes the attendance does not improve. The state law allows us that on the 61st day of having that AIT meeting, families can, and students can be filed on in juvenile court, which we facilitate that through their use of our SCLs.
And that has not been an option to us in the past. It is moving forward.
It's not.
Is it an option or a requirement? I'm just curious.
I'm sorry?
Is it an option or a requirement?
It's an option. There are some reasons why we would not file on a family for various reasons.
Illness, yeah, legitimate illnesses that were.
Exactly. But for most part, yes, we'd be filing on them. Again, we're going to keep a one system in place for what we're doing, so there's less confusion amongst our staff and our families. We're going to utilize our panorama intervention plans to write our attendance intervention plans. So that, once the plan is written, we can also get that progress monitoring and alerts of, hey, is someone checking in on the student? How is their progress with what they're doing and with the setup of their attendance intervention plan? And that's pretty much it. The pictures are almost the same as what Dr. Sturgill shared earlier.
Questions for the board?
You feel as though you have all the tools coming from us that you need to? Do you feel as though you have all the tools that you need from us to implement as?
With both of these presentations, to me, one of the biggest keys we have is horizontal consistency throughout the district. That Admiral King and Washington are the same. And that that's something that we learned didn't happen last spring. And so it's going to be on somebody to keep an eye on that and.
Which is why we're utilizing the one system for monitoring. Not only can it be monitored at the school level, we can monitor at the district.
So if there's something not happening in the building that is consistent with what we're outlining, they'll draw our attention to it, we can go over and coach accordingly.
So who monitors the situation?
I'm sorry?
Who monitors it? Whose job is it daily?
Daily, we're going to have, Stephen is doing middle school and high school, and Bill Oley will do elementary.
And I'll say this, I think, one, you know, our, our platform panorama that we've spoken to gives us daily trends. And it is the responsibility of the school leader to be looking at those daily trends, working with teaching staff. We have central office support. We have weekly Tuesday meetings with every building across the district. And we're going to get even more personalized in those meetings. So the who is a collective who. But bottom line upfront, our principals are the first line of, you know, observing that. We, we went through, and we also said, you know, secretaries, they're, they're making personalized phone calls. So they're also, at rest Mrs. Herta, so my, my building administrative assistant, one of the two, her and Elsie, they helped support us along the way. They were catching things ahead of time before I even knew because of that personalized approach. And then it was my job to get all the supports lined up. It's the same approach. So it's not a one, it is the collective agency, and we all have different responsibilities at different roles.
So the panorama, panorama system takes everything, puts it together, and?
To get this data in real time. Along with the additional spreadsheets that, that our team has made to help even look at trends, see growth per week, are we up or down? You know, what's why? We have longitudinal data now where we can look over last year and kind of maybe use some predictive analytics to say, hey, we know this time we saw a dip. What are the things that we're going to put in place to help support that dip across district, across buildings? But that's where, Dr. Ballot, you asked, what are some things that we might need? It, it is a consistency in programming. So, you know, every time when we come with that annual panorama bill, keep saying yes. That will be helpful because, you know, consistency breeds growth. You know, fortunately, we as a district have tried to program our way to fixes and programs change over time. Consistent practices along with the system's help. So before, you know, we had all these different ways of running attendance. It was all over the place, right? Now we're, have a consistent, user-friendly model to do that, that also has strategies attached to it. So what we've done is we've taken all of these different areas and now we say, all right, here's a simple piece. But at the end of the day, whether we're talking attendance, whether we're talking behavior, this is a word for personalization. I hope that word comes across. And we all have a part in making our experiences personalized. And I'm going to say this, I don't know where the camera is, but community facing as well. We need to set those routines. You know, I, I've got a seven and eight-year-old at home right now, and oh, my daughter is thinking about that earlier, wake up in 11 days or whatever it might be for her in particular. But we started practicing it. Like there, there are certain things that we can do from a family standpoint to set, to help set our students up for success. That's a personalized approach, calling in and saying, hey, this is what's going on. That's a personalized approach. Our role in doing.
Ask one follow-up question. So when those trend lines that you call them are out of tolerance?
Right.
And the building principals are trying to handle it, but they don't want it heavy to come down on them. Who are, who gets to see when we're out of tolerance? And what is our triage process to get it back?
Can I talk about that, Michael and Stephen? So we, so a couple of revisions. Yeah, I'm coming off the top road mark.
I love it, though.
So I think very directly, we needed to revise how we worked with our district leadership team. So our district leadership team this year is going to have all of our principals on it. It's going to be a larger group. We will have additional staff members from the LEA, from some of our unions as well. And we revised our data calendars, so we're real clear about which data sources we are looking at, which month of the year, which date of the year. So everybody, every building is connected to that. Our head principals will be part of that team. Our prior district leadership team for the last five years has been a smaller team, designed more to learn and then design. That's, it was, I think, very effective to do those things, but the level of implementation we need, it was not effective enough. The other big revision that we're making is with our school leader meetings. So we've met with all of our school leaders monthly for the last several years. Again, lined up with what our district leadership team put together to learn and then to start to implement, has not implemented well enough. So one of the big feedback pieces we got from our school leaders last school year was we needed to be more personal, closer connected with them and their data. So when we get together monthly with them now, we are going to be looking at their data with them in small groups, partnered or groups of three, to take a look and see what is very specifically happening with your intervention plans for behavior for attendance in your school right now with our team together. So we can problem solve and figure out what barriers we have, places where we need to reinforce that are going well. But the way that we've worked as a central office team needs to evolve to much better implement and monitor, to your point.
Just to go off what Mike said is, we meet, so the monitoring and how to make sure schools don't get out of whack, we meet every Tuesday at 9:30 and we zoom across the district, and everybody has to be on there, including EMIS with Angie, she is on there, registration, and almost all the central office. And we go line by line, a student in each school.
Problems solved, what's going on?
What's going on with, with these students?
The administrators bring us issues that they, they've learned from the families and that we can connect them with the people that we know of that maybe they hadn't thought of. And these flow charts, I mean, a lot of these processes have been in place, but this codifies it, like you said, across the district. Everyone understands their role in the process. And as school is coming back, I want to tell all the families out there who are watching the board meeting, if a student misses the equivalent of about two days a month, they're on track to being chronically absent by the end of the year. Every minute in school counts. If they have frequent early dismissals, try and get them back to school. Try and make sure they're in school as often as possible. Students can't learn if they're not in school.
And I want leadership to understand, from me, from the board position, it's not us trying to do a gotcha on, on, and look at, look at what you're not doing, but it's how we can come together and help you solve the problem. Because at the end of the day, we are here for that.
These aren't our rules. This is the state of Ohio. And, you know, you talked about two days a month. How about a half-hour tardy every day for 100 and, yeah, I mean?
The equivalent of those minutes.
Because it's, because it's not absences, it's minutes.
Unfortunately, yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Missy, Stephen, appreciate it. And again, I think we always, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, yep.
Can you give us the number of hours? That's what was one of my questions. Do you know?
For which one?
For the chronic absenteeism.
So for, to be considered an A level, it's 38 hours in a month or 65 hours in a year, excused and unexcused. To reach that chronically truant level, it's 72 hours unexcused.
How many days is that? How many days is 72 hours?
Well, depending on how long it will.
I'm going to guess 12.
12-ish, yeah. And, and a lot of our kids may not miss, like, like Mr. Ferguson was saying, they may be in school every day, but if they're a half hour to an hour late every day, that adds up.
And when we start talking about achievement, we did a study during Dr. Graham's first time around, looking at Bill Oley. We, we surmised that like around that 11th day is when we started to see a drop-off in student achievement. A severe drop-off in students. So it, the math maths in this equation, and we have to have our students here. It's, it is a predictable environment that we're going in for. So if I'm a student and I'm not showing up regularly, that environment is not predictable to me. Therefore, it's hard for me to thrive in, and thrive in that environment. At the end of the day, like, routines matter, right? That's how you stack habits. So coming to school regularly and being here and, and making sure that you're learning the procedures and, and of course, the content that comes along with it, building those relationships, it all works together. So I'm looking, seeing, looking at AJ, I'm, you know, the wraparound, removing the, helping us remove the barriers. And Dr. Ballot, you asked earlier, you know, are we learning from others? Absolutely. And we have some really good people internally, too, that are, that are pushing the envelope and making sure that we get to success. We have the responsibility of making sure that we're approachable. Because it's, it's easy to have all these things in place. It's another thing for someone to be vulnerable enough to say, yeah, I need these supports.
I certainly hope we're learning from the building that improved by 15 and 12%.
Yep, we know it works, and that will be implemented. But again, Missy, Stephen, thank you. And again, I'm sorry.
I'm going to invite whoever comes to the microphone, and we start having a family conversation. Just grab a microphone and go sit down and be okay. You don't need, you don't need to stand for this part if you wanted to sit down. I wanted to bring up the highly contact with the dojo we're using and the Google Voice and the phone calls. So I, I love that we're going to dojo for everyone. And just as a, my mom in me and safety in me, I would love if we would get away from using phone numbers. I don't know what the policy or rules, I don't think there is a policy because I've read that book, regarding phone numbers, I'm not sure. But I would really love if we could get away from using phone numbers. Even with our coaches, I know they contact our kids a ton, but I know there's, if we use dojo for it or something else for it.
You're referencing our staff?
Yes, that, no, no. So I don't want staff to contact students on their personal cell phones. If it's in dojo or.
Right, and dojo does not allow a teacher to directly contact a child. They can send a class message out, so we could have Coach's Craig classes in dojo, and then they could send it out to that app en masse. And then they're not personally sending text messages to their, their athletes, club members, whichever you want to speak to.
I know even like the CCP, oh my goodness, Ms. Vore, she was great for it. Would, you know, the kids could text her anytime and, you know, wanting to help the kids, you know? But.
It puts people at risk.
It puts people at risk. There's been a lot in the news. And, and I think that that would be a way to help protect their kids.
Thank you.
And again, I think we've always agreed that we, we believed anyway, that we had the right people in the right places doing the right things. But hopefully this, but the system was flawed. So now we created a system. So now we created a system that says when to initiate supports, what to, how to do it, what to expect, and then obviously how to monitor and make sure that we're sitting on top of it. So again, thank you all for the leadership, appreciate what we're doing here. All right, with that said...
Thank you.
All right, the board to consider for approval, item 9.01, personnel matters.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Washington?
Yes.
Dr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mrs. Nazario?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Abstain. I have a relative on it.
I would like the board to consider for approval, item 9.02, personnel matters.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Washington?
Yes.
Dr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
I have to abstain, my wife is on this list, as my sister is.
Mrs. Nazario?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
I have to abstain also, I have the same relative on that one.
I would like the board to consider for approval, item 9.03, personnel matters.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Dr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mrs. Nazario?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
I'd like the board to consider for approval, item 9.04, personnel matters.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Dr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mrs. Nazario?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
I have to abstain again, I have a cousin on that one.
We don't get anything done without one of those.
This is getting crazy.
He's resigning, right?
Okay.
I wouldn't, yeah, abstain, which one's that one?
So that's 9.06.
Like the board to consider for approval, item 9.05, personnel matters.
So moved.
I don't have a relative on here.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Washington?
Yes.
Dr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mrs. Nazario?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
I'd like the board to consider for approval, item 9.06, personnel matters.
So moved. No relatives on this one either.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Washington?
Yes.
Dr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mrs. Nazario?
I have to abstain.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
I'd like the board to consider for approval, items 9.07 to 9.09, personnel matters.
So moved. Support.
Discussion.
Yes. I, I know that this is going to have to be a yes for you guys, but I, in disagreement with the ticket prices going higher, I know a lot of times there are a lot of people standing around the ticket booth, they're usually teachers or employees that are helping to pay for kiddos to get in. I wish that we would consider allowing all of our students into our games for free. We know that costs are rising, and our families can't afford lunch very comfortably, so I would think that they couldn't, I know they're $20, I know we need money, but I'm asking for that on record. Can you type that? Yes, you can. Thanks.
Anyone else? I mean, I believe those prices are set by the conference, which is why we're...
Yeah, the new conference that we're moving to, that we have to drive.
Thank goodness.
I would know.
So, did we have a motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Dr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mrs. Washington?
No.
Mrs. Nazario?
Hi, yes.
I'd like the board to consider for approval, items 10.01 to 10.36, operations matters.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion. Does this include the one about in lieu of transportation?
Switching over to the new piece, yes. We desire. Great, I'm going to reach out to Mary Tony, the new policy on payment in lieu of?
Yes.
Is part of this one, correct? The language on the contract versus...
Yeah. So what, what, could you just give us the nuts and bolts of that?
Yeah, briefly, we, for payment in lieu of, and Mayor, you want to come speak to it and kind of fill in the blanks where I screw it up? We are allowed to, instead of providing transportation via bus for some families or for some students, it's deemed inappropriate, or, so we are allowed to give them money instead. Historically speaking, it's payment in lieu of that goes directly to the families that comes from the district. But now, as I understand it, if we sign a contract with the parents, nothing any different than what we did before, but the money comes from the state, is reimbursed.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
So, yeah, the only difference is that they get the same amount of money, the only difference is that we can put that on our T2 reports for reimbursement at the end of the year.
Okay, so it's a, it's a financial benefit to us and no cost to the student or family.
That's correct. I believe it's $33,000 we'll save, based on last year's numbers.
Correct.
Okay, perfect. That's all I wanted to hear. Any other discussion?
Yes, so we have the last year's numbers on here, they're not updated yet, so can we make a motion to approve as amended with the new...[1665.12]